Okay, welcome everybody to the 9:38 AM March 3rd work session here at Town Hall. I will ask the Secretary of Treasury to manage with the role.
Scott Horowitz.
I am here.
Ed Warner, I'm present. Rich T. Marin.
Here.
Joe McLaughlin.
Here.
Matt Parsons.
Present.
All right, all right, let's get started. I see we have our parks. Lieutenant Kristen Dullos, I'd like to ask you to come up and let's talk about your parking by permit regulations discussion. On the trustee road beaches, how are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Morning Kristen.
Just gonna have a little handout first of mine. See if you want to hand it down.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's find back this sheet.
Thank you.
So thank you for having me. I've had some brief discussions with some of you about this and I've also come in front of the town board in a work session to discuss this. My goal is to standardize the signage on access roads and beaches. Currently, we have forty-six parking by permit locations throughout the town in seven different timeframes. So it's, yes, it gets very confusing for staff who are replacing the signage, for the police department, for the public, traffic control. You know, sometimes the signs get mixed up, they grab the wrong sign when one needs to be replaced. I think we're in a good position to look at this right now because during COVID, we put different restrictions on a lot of the signage, a lot of that had to be done with like stickered decals over existing signs. Those are since like deteriorating, so we're at a point where a lot of our signs like need to get updated. Or they've just rusted out and you know, we need it because of that. So it felt like a good time to embark upon this. And try to make everything just consistent from a May fifteenth to a September fifteenth timeframe. Now, you actually have in your trustee code that the trustee roads for your trustee parking permits is May fifteenth, September fifteenth. Whereas Chapter 312 of the town code has those same roads as July first to Labor Day. So we would actually be coming consistent with your trustee code on the trustee access roads. And then of course, there's a lot of other access roads throughout the town that we would change it to. So you could kind of see a listing of everything here. We also had two roads that we do have signage on that weren't actually in our Chapter 312, which is Pineapple Avenue, Circle Beach, and the north side of Road H. So Road H was brought in during COVID, it's on your books actually, but it was throughout the year sometimes enforced, sometimes not enforced, depending on you know, certain circumstances. So we would suggest at this point that we continue to keep the parking by permit on the north side of Road H.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I mean.
I think it all makes sense so far.
Yeah. Well, I mean.
Just like simplify.
To make it uniform, I know what we're doing here now, when I first ran with Sunday back in nineteen years ago, I started doing some of this, changing the dates and stuff like that. And multiple trustee boards, multiple town boards, throwing COVID in there, it really become, it had become the parking like haphazard how it was done. So I applaud you for taking this and making it uniform for everybody to enforce and the public to know too. It's you know, you pull down there.
It's the right time to do it.
The signs are cheaper, the like, everybody does not like questioning, especially the parking. You know, people writing the tickets because they kind of botch it because they're not sure.
Yeah, it's really not their fault because sometimes there'll be a road end with two different sets of rules on it just simply because there was an error made along the way because we go into our sign shop and there's literally, you know, ten to fifteen versions of any given signs throughout the course of the past twenty years when they were made. So yeah, I'm just really trying to standardize it, make it clear.
And multiple roads were added during COVID, the town roads, which people think well, they're trustee roads because they go to the water, but technically they're town roads. So yeah, I mean, have you had any discussions with Charlie McCall and the Highway about this? Because I know, you know, some of them are his, under his jurisdiction.
I have more so to the extent of assisting with sign making and they were extremely supportive of that. So you know, I'm gonna have to go back with them too. I didn't really think of it from the perspective of being a highway road end. I was just thinking of the sign meeting, so I could just reiterate to them like this is actually a road end, but.
And then the next question is the cost of all the signage and stuff like that.
Well, working with the Highway Department printing shop is going to drastically decrease the cost of that.
Absolutely, we know it's expensive to have these signs.
Right, we've had those conversations with the Highway Super and the Deputy and it, that's a great point because they can handle it all in-house, streamline it, it'll make it a lot easier, consistency on the enforcement, it's the right time to do this.
Yeah, I already spoke with the Highway Department and given them some preliminary numbers of what we probably have to print, seeing if we potentially use some old signs that could just be refaced. So yeah, we could save probably at least fifty to seventy-five percent of the cost rather than going out to printing. And then I've also reached out to Carl Scheinhamel, who's the head of Traffic Control. He's all for anything that makes things easier and more standard, so.
And those are good dates because I mean, it's different now, there's a different constituent out there, out here than when a lot of those signs were put in however long ago.
Right, and you need a full season permit in the summer for those access roads anyway. So typically, it's a resident who's using those roads. Their permit is still good through June thirtieth of twenty-five, so it's, it's not really gonna affect even if they don't have their beach permit by May fifteenth, the one from last season will still be valid.
Good.
What is your timeframe for completion?
Uh, well, right now, I'm working with the town attorney's office to draft the amendment, so it's whenever they could put it on. I'm hoping, the goal is to put it on to set a public hearing at the very least in a meeting in March. So I would anticipate that the public hearing would be held either the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April. And then whether there'll be a notice of adoption in the same meeting or not, I'm not sure. The long story short, I would anticipate by the end of April having the code amended. If, you know, if the town board decides to, you know, move forward.
So what's next steps for us?
We have our notice of public hearing on for our amendment, which will basically, we have one change that says, on trustee roads where permits, where permits in town of Southampton Parks and Recreation permits are concurrently allowed, any parking restriction imposed by the town of Southampton shall be deemed to have been imposed by the trustees as well. We're gonna have a public hearing on the seventeenth meeting with a notice of adoption if we adopt it at that time. So you'll have, at least going into the season, I think our part of it is done. If there's something else you need, we can amend it for public hearing, you just let me know what you need and I'll make the change.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so you know, worst case scenario, we don't have all the signage changed over leading into the season, but the signage that's up is least, less restrictive anyway for the most part. So I'm not, you know, even if we have to do it heading into the season, I'm not too worried about it disrupting people's, you know, ability.
Well, really, the true season doesn't start until like July.
Yeah.
So July and August is when the meat of the season is. Before that, it gives us, you know, a few months to be able to get the.
When do the temporary cops start?
I'm not exactly sure, I would imagine by Memorial Day, somewhere around there.
Because that's sometimes the hiccup, because they're over there scratching tickets and they don't really, you know, I know it's happened a couple of times in the village of Southampton, but I don't know when the town.
There's gonna be a transition period here.
But this'll make it easier for them, at least they know.
The dates are actually, for the back right now, the May fifteenth, some of them are April first. So you know, they were, they were already enforcing on some of those roads earlier. So that will actually, some, some roads will become less restrictive, some will become more restrictive. I think it's a happy medium and I think it's the dates that we're like realistically working in, in our season, is that May fifteenth, September fifteenth, you know, the shoulder seasons have gone a little bit more extended than they used to be.
Fall's nicer here than spring apparently, it's still cold and then you got allergies, you know.
It's usually a week before Memorial Day and a week after Labor Day, so it gives you a nice timeframe to be able to.
I think it's good.
Exactly.
I think it's good.
We're all for it, we're all for it.
No, I am telling.
All right, so we're wheels, we're already wheels in motion, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anything further you need, you know where to find us.
Okay.
Any way we can help, we're here.
Yep.
That's a copy of the agenda for the notice of public hearing. Yeah, okay, you got it.
All right, let's go, let's go back to the top of this list, get Kristen Dullos on her way, she's very busy. Fish stocking proposal.
Every year, we do fish stocking in the local ponds. We've reached out to reached out to several providers for the fish stocking and I believe Cold Springs Hatchery has come in with the best price. So we're looking to, you know, do similar to what we did last year, trying to get the numbers here, but I don't have them, so. Five thousand dollars, right, is that the quote that we got for the fish stocking?
Yes.
Yep, and the list of ponds that we plan on stocking is Trout Pond, Big Fresh Pond, Little Fresh Pond, Wildwood Lake, Alcotts Pond, Beaver Lake, Kells Pond, East Pond, Aspetuck Creek, and Round Pond and Sack Harbor. So these are consistent that what we have done in the past. I know we've expanded from when I first was on the board. Every year, I ask anybody in their areas if they want to include any of the other ponds that, lakes, ponds that we have in the town. So this is the list that we have for this year. So, and then I believe we're gonna get some, what golden shiners to put into a couple of the ponds. I believe East Creek and Eastport and also the pond Silverbrook in Landers, which we did in the past and it's to remediate the mosquito larvae. Instead of having insecticides sprayed around the ponds, we use the Minos De Viti and they spawn five times in a season. So by the end of the season, the population should grow and they should be able to winter over. So we should be able to establish these fish stocks in these two ponds to keep the mosquito population down.
All right, thank you for including Silverbrook.
Well, I mean, that was the first pond that we did, the project with the recommendation from Jim Walker because Fred Havermeyer and I walked the pond when we were putting the bubbler in there, we seen all these little mosquito larvae in there and we had a question of how do we get rid of them? And that was the easiest, you know, most environmentally.
Solution.
Solution, so, yep.
Great, okay, so that's good. Then we've got the shellfish seeding proposal with Cornell Cooperative.
Yes. I know we've gone back and forth as far as changing the proposal with Cornell. Initially, we used to just get hard clams, scallops and oysters and just put them in just like that. I know trustee Marin had some questions about using spat on shell as far as with the oysters in Quonic Bay to be able to make an actual reef appear and keep adding to it over the next few years. And that way, the oysters don't settle into the background and just get smothered. So we've gonna, we had done that last year and we had asked Cornell to give us a little, you know, oversight on what's going on there as to how the spat on shell did and survived and stuff like that. So I believe we're going to do the clams this year, we're gonna get a hundred and fifty thousand clams that are gonna be planted flat out and then we're gonna overwinter some of the clams, a hundred thousand of them with them to get them to grow basically another season larger. The survival rate from the clams that we get right out of the hatchery to these other clams that are wintered over is almost, you know, it goes from like ten percent to almost ninety percent. So getting fewer clams but having a much better survival rate is personally, I think it's the way to go. We're looking to also do the base scallops, forty thousand of them, which we have done every year since I've been on the board. We're working with Cornell and the College and the DEC to come up with a parasite resistant scallop. I believe they've done a lot of genetic surveys on the scallops in Murches Bay and Our Waters and also out in Pecanix. And they're trying to come up with a scallop that has the genetics of more of a southern based scallop, which looks almost identical, is almost identical to our northern scallop, but they seem to have a better survival rate. So they're trying to get that genome and to, you know, basically spawn it for seeding purposes. And the oysters, we're gonna get forty thousand of them and I guess we'll discuss as a board where we're gonna place those into the water within the town.
Talk about that Tyana spot again, that seems to be a good one.
Yeah, I mean, I know historically, we have done like North Sea Harbor, but Conscious Point Oysters already gives us oysters there, so. And in Cold Springs, we have Peter Topping with the Pecanix Bay Keeper, he does some oysters there in Red Creek. So we've used our oysters last year for enhancement of the shellfish spawn sanctuary in Tyana Bay.
And the forty thousand base scallops, is that just because that's all they can produce, they can't jack that number up?
Well, I mean, it's, we, that was what we came up with for thirty-five thousand dollars.
I just didn't know if we could cut out some spat on shell considering we're gonna do that Me Cox relay.
Well, this is a preliminary, you know, draft, you know, ask. I said we're gonna bring it before the whole board, discuss it, and if we want to tweak it a little bit, we can.
The better survival rate size makes more sense.
Base scallops and less spat on shell, but that's just quickly looking at this.
All right, well, why don't we discuss it and come up with some kind of a, you know, realistic number that we can, you know, maybe cut back on the twenty-one thousand dollars worth of spat on shell and add to the twenty-eight hundred dollars. Let me, and let me get ahold of the.
Yeah, just see if they can produce that, because their scallops are dicey, you know, they take up so much room in the hatchery.
Yeah, and they're also doing it for everybody, you know, they do it for the commercial agricultures and for us and for other townships. So let me reach out to Cornell and see if they can get that a little bit higher and I'll circle back with the board, all right?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we have the Lake Agawam application.
Yes. Really? We've given a permit for this whole project on Lake Agawam with the village and the conservancy. We've given several permits for it, I believe it's the, correct me if I'm wrong, James, it's the last renewal that we can have and what they're asking for is a little bit different than what we originally approved. So I asked them to come back with a formal application for, so that we can look at it, review it and see what tweaks they have. I believe we discussed it internally and we're okay with it, but I want the rest of the board to understand that it's not the original application that we approved. I know you've been front of center on this job, so, so yeah, I would.
When are they sending?
They're gonna, we, we're gonna have them come in next meeting and give. Yes. Yes, and if they want to come in for a Zoom meeting explaining to the board, I know the outfall and stuff like that was a little bit different. So I want to make sure everybody on the board is clear with it and also everybody in the public, so.
I think the public, it's important for the public to have the information, that's the best way to get it.
Yeah, and we're using a lot of CPF funding, so it's, and it's a very big project and, you know, if it works here, they can probably use it as a template for other ponds. And that's, that's part of it, we can put, we can put CPF tomorrow to get other areas. Yep.
Okay, good with that.
All right, so that's.
We're good.
That's it.
We're good, we're good. All right, those are the discussion points for the work session. Now we can move into the general permit applications for determination. First one is Deborah Tennyson Feinstein seventeen Wiesek, Shoreline Bulk Hitting. I see a representative from Shoreline Bulk Hitting here, sitting in the back. You can come here, you can sign in.
Oh, I guess.
Good morning. How are you? Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Sign in, state your name for the record.
Michael Trovich, Shoreline Bulk Hitting.
Okay. So you are asking for a modification to go to eighteen inches, right? Move and replace one hundred and eighty feet of bulkhead and raise to eighteen, an elevation of eighteen from its existing. Installation of capping, you're gonna have a sixteen foot southern return, a twenty foot northern return. You're gonna be doing a naturally vegetated, natural disturbance buffer behind the bulkhead. That's gonna work in coordination with another buffer as well from the environment division, right?
Yes, I believe Marty's got some plan for our swimming pool.
Right, so there's a much larger buffer, I believe, that's in place. So you, you want to go from twelve to eighteen, right? I was there Saturday, I looked at it and I don't, I don't see any issue with doing that based on the adjoining properties and that locale. I mean, if you, you want to speak to how you're gonna handle getting this?
If you guys need a little bit of, the property is pretty much on a peninsula, there's no bulkhead on either side. So the reason to come up that extra eighteen inches and heavily vegetate beyond that is to just keep the water shedding to a minimum. You know, the actual extra inches that we're asking for is really just to minimize the flow of the water coming down.
I can see the grade right there, that's kind of where you're getting at.
Right, and it's super low.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna bring the bulkhead up higher so I can still leave a six inch reveal, you know, and that will, you know, stop the water and then it'll dissipate through the ground. I don't, you know, we're gonna keep the ground at least six inches lower, so the extra inches that I'm asking for is just to have the physical wood higher.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I've always been a fan of increasing, as long as you're not gonna, it's not gonna be detrimental to neighboring properties, which just doesn't look like it's a problem.
No.
And you're just trying to like keep runoff from going into the bay.
Percolate through the ground.
And yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a better project, in this case, so.
In light of our six and four and five and six in trade falls that we're having in the sheet runoff, that if you have the elevation of the ground exactly the same height as the bulkhead, it just runs right in. So having that elevation change and slowing the water down and having some vegetation behind there is what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right, so for this site, for where this is, it makes sense, it'll be a better project by doing that, so I would advance this.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You have stamp plans already, okay, so we're good. Do you have, you have something else here, right, while you're sitting there?
I got one more that I can handle, the other one, I think I'll let Kristen handle.
Okay, so we're gonna advance this one, okay, so which one is it that you have?
Five oh nine Captain's.
I mean, yes. It's just a map behind it, make it, make it straight.
I just want to make it straighter. I, the, if you look at, I don't know, pull up the drawing, but it's kind of like in a zigzag fashion where it's like five corners.
I was curious as to why that, why you guys want to change this.
Why do we want to change it? Uh, just the pure access of getting to the water, to the water easier, safer, he's got younger children.
It was owner preference, basically.
It's owner preference and it's, it just aesthetically, it'll look nicer, I mean, better than a bunch of zigzags.
But you'll have to get a permit for the fact, there's a lot of, I actually was down there last fall and there was quite a bit of growth with the time it is and so forth, so you're gonna have to, I just get a permit for that, I was, I don't know.
Yes, I have an application, I think it's already approved from DESEC for the same modification. You know, just if you look at the, yeah, if you look at what we're trying to do, it's three forward. I think it decreased the length by like two or three feet, it's nothing crazy.
Are you still looking to do the jet ski permit, the jet ski rack ponds?
That was a question as well. I'm not too sure.
That's a separate application.
Jet ski float or jet ski?
The float, the floats.
Oh, the floats?
Oh, you're doing jet ski floats?
I think it was one application.
You have them? They already got those applications, okay, so they already have permits for them.
This was just a design change that I.
So James, you looked at this?
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
So I don't see any reason why it can't advance?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, you good? And then you say the other one, you're gonna hold.
I'll, I'll let Kristen dive in.
All right, so we'll, so we'll hold your other one, which is Tanhauser, right, Twelve Sun Court? And then this one here can advance. And this is five oh nine captains. That's all you have for us today? All right.
Men's board, guys, thank you very much.
Kristen did send me an email about, I think, fifteen Common Point Drive about the seasonal docks.
Yes.
There is a reason that those docks are seasonal because of the ice that piles up in there from Pecanix Bay. There were permanent docks here years ago, even though they had bubblers, it piles up and then it freezes and the docks literally get lifted up out of there and that's why, you know, the trustees always cut, you know, I mean, there are a couple permanent docks, so if she wants to come in and discuss it with the whole board and bring in presentation, we can discuss that a little bit further, okay?
Okay, I think I'll join her on that one as far as the construction goes, I know things have changed a lot too. Listen, I know our ice hasn't been the same as it was ten years ago, both, you know, new cross bracing and ice piles. I mean, we have piers all over the bay that have never lifted up.
Right.
In twenty years, so I mean.
Proper construction.
Yeah, I think that has a lot to do with it.
That'd be good education for our board.
Plus now, nowadays, from what he's talking about, we require stamped engineered plants. So there's a difference of what was done twenty years ago to what's done now.
A lot of those docks are just four by fours and seasonal docks. They were put in in Maine, taken out in September. So now that it's, things are evolving a little bit more with bigger docks, bigger pilings and better, you know, construction.
I'll see.
Job security for some people, I don't know. You know, just to give you guys a quick thing, you know, with the pilings, with the way we design our piers, all of our pilings are put in fat side down.
That's the way it's supposed to be. It releases when it comes up, that's the way it's supposed to be.
You know, there's not a lot of us that do it.
Some are cheating.
You know, that's it, that's job security.
The difference between treated poles and the tropical hardwood, the tropical hardwood doesn't float, the other poles do float. So when you put the tropical wood in, it seems to be much heavier and denser and it doesn't lift out as easily as the other, other wood that I, I remember this years ago, they used to just pull. And they also used to use trees, like oak trees and stuff like that, and they still have the bark on them. So when the ice would catch around them, they would literally lift them right up. So like I said, the construction has changed.
Well, tropicals are about to change too, I hope, with you guys, if you guys are looking into the tropical and CCA.
We're gonna have a discussion about it.
See you this afternoon.
We'll see, we're learning about this because there's inconsistency with the regulatory authorities, which is not particularly logical. So we don't know, we're all trying to learn about this, there's a lot to learn.
Yeah, I think it's a good move to go back to it, it's up to you guys.
Well, there's gonna be a process by which we figure out why it is that other regulatory authorities are off in other directions. So we're, we're gonna walk our way through that by speaking to a lot of professionals and doing our research on this because there's a lot of discussion and a lot of complaints and issues, so.
Tropical pilings don't last, that's all I'm gonna say. There's ones that are out there that are twenty years old that are rotting away.
Yeah, it's been our concern as well as like the, like we've said before, the environmental hypocrisy of cutting down the rainforests.
It ain't that green.
It's not that green, so like, let's, let's really see like how long an impregnated CCA piling reaches CCA.
Okay.
You know, like, but we, we kind of have to, we have to cover our sides before we make a decision.
Yeah, there's a lot of information out there and there's a lot of, you know, analysis that's been done and we're all trying to learn about this to make sure the decisions that we make are good decisions, especially based on the fact that other regulatory authorities, you know, in our locale are not consistent. And I think if you're gonna really have good environmental policy, everybody needs to be rowing in the same direction or the boat's going around in circles. And right now, it's, it's a little unclear, so we're trying to get some, some good clarity with some science and some common sense and logic behind it, so. All right, that's it, that's for the next meeting, I think.
Sounds good, guys.
Okay?
Have a great day.
Two. So let's go to Ten Marlin Road, American Marine Construction Edward N. Elka. Is anybody here representing this? Hello?
Good morning.
If you can sit down and state your name and sign in.
I most certainly will, my glasses on.
Good morning, glasses help, I've learned this.
So Deborah Labazo, American Marine Construction.
Okay. See attached, huh?
The prior permits or, oh, the job description.
Right. Remove and replace approximately one hundred and two linear feet of existing bulkhead using composite material, two ten foot returns, green hard horizontal dead men with tie rods.
And I agree with them.
Eighteen inch cap of composite material, backfill with ten yards of clean granular fill. Gonna replace a ramp and a six by twenty float using green art. For future reference, if you can get that on, like here, it's really important that we get that. Right, James, gotta, gotta get it on the cover sheet.
Yeah. This makes the whole review process a lot easier for everybody.
Yeah, to, to handle, so that would be helpful for, you know, if you could do that, that would be great.
No problem.
Um, what do we have, James? Do we have?
We have an old, what looks like survey, sort of plan. Do you have new plans by any chance?
Those are, those are new plans. They're with the application. There were new plans that came in. There's a future, um, application. There were plans, picture. Survey.
I've got it.
There's an old survey in the office.
I got an old Haxter map.
Yep, that's the location map.
And, um, I got some pictures.
Here's a set of plans if you need to use the plan.
We need an updated survey for this piece of property.
You should have, you should have all that. These plans you wanna cross you. These pictures.
I have.
Do you have it in that file?
Yeah, I have some, something here. Now, this is a, this is a different type of neighborhood than the last one.
It's all adjacent bulkhead. This is, um, a, um, street area. Which you should have that too.
Yeah, but you, you're not, yeah, okay, so. We, I don't know.
You got pictures?
Yes.
Who's that floater?
Yeah, I don't, is there, is there a permit for this floating dock? What, what are you doing with elevation here? I see your, your neighbor's bulkhead's higher. The adjoining bulkhead is.
We're doing a removal and replacement and they are having their own, um, returns.
Right. Is the return gonna match the adjoining property owner? Is it, is it going to the height of the adjoining property owner?
The return, we can do that.
Cause you need, there needs to be more clarification on this, on this, uh, project. You know, we need to know about that. And these plans aren't. They're not, they're not engineered plans, right? They're stamped engineered plans.
They're gonna need stamped engineer plans.
And we need to know about.
I recommend that the height of the grade of the bulkhead is the same grade as the adjacent.
On this one, yeah, because I think that while you're doing this.
I don't believe that, that, um, floating dock is probably permitted. If it is, you know, you're probably gonna, I recommend you get a foil to see if that's an actually permitted dock, otherwise it's gonna have to be removed or be in the application.
Yeah, I think it's just tied up.
Right, so we're gonna need to do a little work on this. If you can go back.
I'm just giving you like a, a dot point list that you can kinda fire through, so that way you come back a little bit cleaner and easier.
Right.
We, we, we also, while you're writing on there, is that you have the, um, on that cover sheet, is that all the information that you're applying for beyond the cover sheet? Not on, not on attachment?
Right, so you're gonna have to.
Uh-oh, right.
You gotta get this on here.
I'm just giving you the dot points to.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need to, you to address how you're handling the elevation here, if it's gonna be the same or not the same. But I'm already looking that, you know, there's a, there's a differential here, so you're gonna wanna address that while you're going through this. You know, obviously, let's figure out what's going on with your floating dock.
Height of bulkhead, yeah, floating.
Right?
Is that cat just on, that's just a cat for the top, right, of the, of the whaler, right?
What's, what are we talking about?
This, this cat, that's just the width of the whaler, correct?
Uh, this looks like it's a, a little bigger than the, the width of the whaler, a little bit bigger than that.
Your last point.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it meets that twenty-four, but it's greater than the whale.
And then this dock where they're taking the pictures.
This is, it's just a neighbor.
The neighbor?
It's the neighbor's dock, right? This here?
The, that's, yeah, 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 that's the neighbor's.
Right, so you're, you're looking at the whole cross section from standing on the neighbor's vantage point. You can see, you're, you're pretty, you know, there's a little bit of a gap down here, but you can see a pretty good gap here. So you're gonna have to take a look at what's gonna make sense on the elevation here.
And then where are we as far as electric?
This is starting to lose.
Oh, electric and all that stuff.
Here's a question then with the neighbors. If the neighbors was not permitted per se, do they still request the height to go up to the neighbors? With sake of, I know what you're saying.
We, we want, you wanna get a good project going on it, that makes sense. You know, that's the problem, is people doing things without permits.
Well, that's.
This is a tightly constrained neighborhood and it creates issues up and down the whole place, which is why, you know, you need some good plans and we really need some good direction. So when you, we, we get old stuff and we get a C attached, it's kinda tough to, to, you know, to deal with because we really need, you know, some concise information.
The old stuff might be from the previous permit that they left?
Right, but we, we need to know what project it is that you're doing now, you know what I mean? So we're gonna need answers to all of this. I mean, my, my suggestion with this is, we put it on hold, have a conversation with James, our environmental analyst. And we'll give her a checklist of those items that you need to check the boxes on and, and get.
Much less.
And get things where it needs to be. That way, when it comes back on the work session agenda, you kinda got it, you know, where we can, cause we can't do anything with this right now.
I understand, I understand. Thank you. Um, with the, the elevation dock, if my question is, is if the adjacent property.
That's, that's not.
Was not a permitted.
We're not, that's not a, we're not, don't misunderstand what we're saying here. It's like, we wanna take a look at this property. The project it is that you have proposed and what its relationship is to the adjoining properties in, in a neighborhood that's highly constrained.
Right.
Okay, so we wanna look at it on its own merit and we're also gonna look at what's going either side of it and make a determination of.
Because you're questioning the height of the bulkhead.
Well, because you're not indicating anything in your plans, so it's a guessing game. So we don't know, right? So my suggestion to you is, we put this on hold, you speak to James, the environmental analyst, he will give you a list of what we need to go through. So that when it comes back on the work session, you, you know, you have, you, you're further along, right?
Where are we when we have electric and water on, on our bulkhead?
Well, that's, that's not our, you know, this is.
Not our problem.
Well, no, it's our, it's, it's gotta be accounted for.
The code, right?
Right, it's gotta be accounted for in the process and that's another thing that'll be on the checklist.
Another checklist, it's electric.
Right, and then, and again, I, I think that what makes the most sense is, you know, give a call.
Doing an UL certificate for the electric.
It's a separate, it's a separate issue from us and we can direct you and how to, you know, who to speak to about that, okay?
So stamped engineered plans, height of the bulkhead, float removal, or they can.
Or foil to see if it was already pre-existing.
It, it doesn't say in the last foil one, so I don't know. I, maybe they, it was just left there, I don't know, but it's just.
But you have to make a decision whether you wanna apply for a permit for a floater or remove it altogether.
You can, you can do that. You gotta, just gonna have to amend the plans, which is why I think that. Okay, and, and we have staff that can answer your questions, you know, as you go through it to help guide you through the process. That way, you know, you're productive at your work session. Right?
Yeah, I think if you work with the thin house staff, you'll probably be able to nail it down really clean for the next time.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Cause we know you gotta do it, we understand. It's a good, it's a good project, we get it, we wanna work with you on it. We just wanna, there's a couple things.
I wanna make sure it's like. Mostly to your benefit, like the higher, the higher, you know, could be, could be beneficial depending on the grade of the lawn, but it's, it's, it's all you need to really be nailed down in, in the application.
Section, yeah, I'm looking at.
Yeah, and how are you gonna get to the floater? Are you gonna have a ramp and a?
Yes, there is a, in the job description, it says for ramp.
Yeah, they've got, replace a three by fourteen ramp. And a six by twenty float using green hard framing, so they got, they give it, the thing is, you, you have it all like.
Same in place, but it's.
You've got it on, like, we're, again, you're creating, you're creating this confusion by the way you presented it. So that's what I'm saying, is you gotta get a concise on the paperwork. Right, there's a, there's a checklist of things that you need to do to clean this up and, and our staff's available to, you know, answer your questions. And, and guide you through that, you follow?
Sure.
Right, you're gonna have that buffer language in there as well.
Okay.
On this, on this project and a, and a list of, right, it shouldn't be, and a list of the, and a list of the plants. But, but we, we generally don't like to see this, prior, you know, C attached, prior permit, you know. We need, we need, yeah, no, we need a description there and that's, you know, really important.
Okay.
But they'll, but, believe me, they'll help guide you through that, so it gets.
I'll stop by James.
Stop by James, you know, give a call, all right? Just clear up some of the unknowns, that's all, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I got Stephanie Cardacey, Two Dolphin Road, East Quag. All right. Hello, good morning. All right, so this is again, it's Shinnecock Shores, highly constrained area. This is a bulkhead that is in desperate need of work, right?
Yes.
It's gotta be worked on.
Yes.
So you wanna do in place, all material non-treated vinyl sheeting. You're gonna use sixteen footers, right?
Yes.
So eight foot in, eight foot out, right, good project. Uh, you're gonna do five pilings, ten inch diameter. You're gonna do a buffer. We've got a ten foot buffer going on behind the bulkhead with native species. So this, this is a standard, what do we need here, James?
We just need the cover sheet to say that there's no increase in height.
Right, just.
I think we were proposing to match the neighbor's height.
All right, so then you gotta indicate, you gotta address that.
I think, okay.
Right, cause it's not indicated, just like, you know, the other one. Indicate what the elevation's gonna be.
Do you know how far? Yeah, it's gonna be elevation six point six. I believe we called that out in the section on C two.
Yeah, we need, we need that.
Difference of what it is now? I wanna say it's less than eighteen, it's probably in the sixteen range, but I give you that existing elevation.
Yeah, we're gonna need that. And then just stamp, do these plans stamp?
Uh, they're not.
Okay.
So we're gonna use existing elevation, show the ten foot buffer.
Indicated on the cover sheet, stamp plans. Got the buffer language in there, native vegetation, right? Anything else, James? That's it? That's good? All right. I think, then this, how long, how soon can you get that? Pretty soon?
Probably submit at the end of this week, for sure.
So this, this, two weeks sooner, cause we could advance it pending receipt?
It's up to you.
Yeah, we could advance pending receipt. The engineer's sitting right here, he's gonna get him to you, he'll get him to you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do you have anything else on here for us? Yeah, they're still gonna have to go through, yeah, they'll still have to go through the.
Next work session.
Next work session, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Share the review and move forward.
Get that as soon as you can to James, and then we can get it on. We're good?
I'm here for eight B, Old North Highway as well.
Okay. You're good. Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Eight B, that's me.
Eight B Old North, that's you.
Yes.
Hello. Morning.
Morning.
Eight B Old North Highway, East End Land Planning, Inc.
Yeah, Katie Osekki was not able to attend due to an injury, so.
Okay.
As the engineer on the project, I was attending her and.
Okay.
Building team as well.
Okay. It's basically replacing a staircase on a bluff on the Peconic Beach roadside. Peconic Beach Road. Basically, it's gonna be a seventy-five foot Peconic Beach roadway over there, um, easement, um. Then there's also a conservation easement on the property, I believe, the conservation board? Do you have?
I think we have an application with the conservation board.
Okay, yep. Basically, they're replacing the stairway that, you know, basically comes off the, uh, steps down to the stairway to the beach.
Right, it's a replacement of the existing stair.
Yep.
This, listen, I thought Marty took this over, that having to do these permits.
No, no, we still have jurisdiction because of seventy-five foot.
Yeah.
Peconic Beach Road.
Peconic Beach Road.
It's ours, that's ours.
It's ours. So I'm, basically, it starts in ours and goes landward, so basically.
Not letting anybody take anything over.
Yeah.
Almost taking nothing over around here. Be none of that.
That was my, that's on my little Peconic Beach Road day. Um, can you have the survey or plot the Peconic Beach Road on here, on your survey? Basically, it's from the high tide mark, uh, landward and, uh, the material that, uh, you're gonna be using is non-treated, correct? Or compliant with our, with our codes right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so basically, I like to move this ad then.
We, we just need the dimensions of the staircase on the cover sheet, there's no. Sure.
Okay. Yep.
We'll put that on the cover sheet.
And then get a copy of the revised survey and we should, and once we receive that, then we can put it on for the next. Okay, so we good then, James? All right.
Well, the plans are already stamped, all right?
Yeah, they're stamped, but I'll update it with the information on the cover sheet that you guys need. Um, and then we'll get the, the updated engineer plans as well as the survey.
Just, just for my information in the future, so if you do something like this, you wanted to mention on the, the front sheet of the site?
The cover sheet is a permit.
Character dimension, description, work.
So here we'll give the dimensions, the distance, non-treated, we'll pull it out right.
You know what, you know what it is? Here, here's the thing. What happens is, we get these descriptions in on a permit and then there's all these other details on your plans. And then people come in and say, oh, well, it's, it, it says it right over here in this little corner, we're gonna, no, 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 no. On the cover sheet, this is what you're permitting, not this thing that.
On the general application, there's a, there's a character dimensions and description of work.
Existence reviewed by multiple people and they come in and inspect it.
Clean reference right on the front page is exactly what you're doing. If it's not there, then hey, what's going on here? We don't, we don't wanna play, uh, where's Wildo with the plans?
No. Because it's like hundreds of thousands, not thousands.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. That's like the lady talking about needing her glasses. When I started in this building with the town, I didn't wear glasses. You know what I mean? I, I guess, yes, I am getting older, but I think examining all this stuff put a lot of strain, so.
I'm trying to hold off as long as I can.
Well, you know what, you know what happened to me? You know what happened to me is my arms got too short.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Great day.
All right, so the next one that you have, Mr. Warner, Trustee Warner, it's a Towness Southampton Project, twenty-nine Lighthouse Road.
Yes.
Somebody from Elking McLean here? I know we, didn't we beat this one around?
Yes.
What else do we need from this? I know, I thought we. James, what else do we need on this one? I thought we beat this one up pretty good, right? All right, so we don't need them for that, we just need to have them send the stamp plans over here.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
All right, so we'll.
We can move on to the next one, right?
Yep.
Advance that and stamp plans. I would advance finished stamp plans, yeah, cause we, we went round and round with that one. It's a good project. And, um, the other one is, we did, right? Now, the on hold, twelve sun courts on hold.
Yeah.
So, that's on hold.
Yep.
Right, so then we go into Trustee Marin with Oksana Lashko for Ernie Spelming, uh, twelve Bayview Drive East.
This, well, we don't have anybody here, but this application is. This, well, we don't have anybody here, but this application is the subject of a court action in Supreme Court Riverhead. We've gotten some information from the petitioner's attorney that I'm reviewing. I would recommend very strongly that we hold a public hearing on this when it gets to the point of consideration. And at that point, with nobody else being here, I would just say, just hold it.
Hold it. Okay. Next one that you have, Trustee Marin, is one forty-nine Rose Hill LLC. Right, Twin Forks Permits? Good morning. How are you? You're assisting?
Yeah. Please acquire Twin Forks permits on behalf of the applicant.
Billy Matt, First Commissar. Building the dock.
Building the dock. Okay, good.
Maybe.
Maybe.
All right.
You have to go through the proposal first.
Okay. All right.
I believe you have plans in file.
Go back to that cover sheet. Please, now there's a textbook cover sheet, right there for us, use that as the template, thank you.
I think it covered everything in there.
I reviewed this area, just the short backstory on this, I know this area like the back of my hand, I talked to a few of the old timers that used the same in this area, because this starts to get into like one of the last real spots of traditional fishing that's available. I, when I add, on first review, I. I was like, why do they wanna go out there? I don't know what the upland looks like, but if you hitch it, if you hitch it to the north a little bit, you have deeper water closer to the shore. And it still doesn't deserve the traditional fishery that's there. And it actually gets deeper closer to the shore here than you think. As far as actually utilizing this dock, because that spit, that, that sand spit that comes out on the south side, that gets really shallow and unusable when the bay gets let out, so I, I just, just from local knowledge, I would say that if you hitch it to the north a little bit and go in a little shoulder, it's actually gonna be more usable than where you have it now.
Well, we could propose that, yeah, what do you think?
I'm just trying to, I mean, it's less, less, less pier dock length you have to go out, and probably more, because what, you necessarily, you go like, north a little bit and hitch it around that big, because there's that big hook that's in there.
Yeah, I mean, that little cove roof or whatever, it's got some protection, that's why we kinda proposed it there, but I don't think the area has a specific.
Is it, is it showing that on the hydro numbers here?
Yeah, the hydro numbers show it a little bit, but I just know from local knowledge that it's a little bit.
I got you.
The farther you go away from that hook, the more usable it'll be.
Okay, yeah, we could shift it over.
I'd shift it a little bit, you can see where the hydro numbers are a little bit deeper closer to shore, I'd kinda recommend it plugging it right there. It doesn't disrupt any of the, the seigning activity that's up that way.
And it's okay with all the other tests that have to be, you're plenty far off the property line.
Yeah.
So you're good.
You're basically shortening the structure and, you know, getting more water, so isn't it a go?
We do have a D C permit for this, we have to modify that.
Okay, that's.
Not gonna happen, I don't. Less structure.
They'll likely modify it, but I just, you know, more of what you know.
All right, so you good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Submit back.
Submit.
Okay.
You're too, you're too in front of me.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's true, I'll, and I'll stick around then.
Yeah, all right, so, all right, so you, we're good, okay. Thank you. So you have.
Two tabs, both tabs, fine. So which, who do you wanna start with first?
One seventy-five?
Let's do the easy one first. Aaron, you wanna bring up the file or something?
Or something, what is or something? Are you sleeping?
He was reading the New York Times.
Is that right? I see him back there, he's relaxing, he's taking a little vacation back there. Good morning, Aaron.
You guys start too early for me.
Sorry, we apologize. We apologize.
It's nine thirty.
To get it all done, we gotta start early, buddy.
I guess you're right, I guess you're right. Let me go ahead and pull ahead.
Well, we can, yeah, how about, let's do two seventy-one first, if you don't mind, that one's easier.
All right, I don't mind. Unless James doesn't mind, okay? Couple extra clicks.
No, no carpal tone.
Yep. He's talking to you, Aaron.
Throw it on the pile.
The catwalk with hind ramp and float.
So this is a dock ramp float that extends a total of thirty-six point five feet into Davis Creek. It meets all the requirements.
I think the board had recommended some changes which were incorporated.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes. Yeah. Some of the properties.
That's the latest.
Put water depth. There's a bit of the channel, it's there.
Yep.
Twenty-five feet.
Yep. Yep, that works.
You need this, you got that?
Yeah, it's good.
You got, you good?
It works.
Yeah, it works, yes.
Yep.
That was the easier one, Aaron, huh?
That's why they wanted to do it first.
All right, so that can advance. And then one seventy-five.
Okay, one seventy-five. Aaron, for tuning in first post to West Hampton Beach on behalf of the applicant. This is a, a bulkhead replacement project, and there was a question over how this got built in the first place, because it wasn't, we're in a trustee records on file. So we did some investigation, and as to a run and how this was built, we sent to a letter in January tenth. And basically, what, in order to figure out what happened here, we went back and looked at a.
Is this the one that Ed was saying, it looks like it's from the fifties or something? Yeah, and he just looked at it, he's like, yeah, that's from the fifties.
And so, this survey should be in the file. What we did was, we looked at a whole bunch of old surveys, and we figured out where this was when it got built. And what happened. And so, as best we can figure, this was not built as a bulkhead, it was built as a retaining wall above the high water line, like.
So, and now it's a bulkhead?
And now it's a bulkhead. And so, so we didn't need addressing it because it wasn't in jurisdiction. And so, but now it's, the water doesn't touch it, I was there.
Now it's in your jurisdiction.
And now it's in your jurisdiction.
Okay.
And I went there, gosh, I forgot to put the date on these, but these are some photos of the site. And what's nice about this, this site and this project is that there's a very healthy little Spartina marsh that's grown up in front of it. And on top of the, of the existing bulkhead slash retaining wall now, it's got Rosa Redosa and some other native uplands. So, you know, pulling the old one out, putting a new bulkhead in, replanting the top with, you know, it's already got a built-in buffer of ten feet. So, and that way, we don't disturb the marsh, we can.
Right, use a rock instead of a bulkhead.
Well, because we're gonna, we're gonna chew up a lot more real estate than the one, because we're gonna need at least twelve feet of footprint.
And you may, you may endanger that nice little Spartina marsh.
We're not marsh, this way we can pull the one out and slip the other one in.
Least of basis.
Then you're just gonna pump it, you know, rattle it in.
Yeah, these could almost bang them in.
Yeah, hardly, slightly, a little hydraulic.
I think the least, the least disturbance you have to that marsh is probably.
It's, it's nice, isn't it? It's really kinda healthy, and it's up and down the strip, so, really. And the fact that the marsh is, is growing there, you know, it's a pioneer, did it on its own, wasn't planted.
That's, you wanna preserve that.
Are you gonna put it in the same jogs and everything of the existing one?
You wanna preserve that marsh?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, because that, yeah, because the marsh is right there in the corner.
So you're just gonna just mimic what's there, are you gonna follow and replace?
Yeah, follow and replace, just do it in sections.
I would say you need to preserve that marsh, so that needs to take that into consideration.
Yeah. Aaron?
Yeah.
The retaining wall, when it was built as a retaining wall, was there a permit on file from downstairs?
No, didn't find anything.
Could you just perhaps put on the cover sheet, just for historical records for the future? That the, the previous retaining wall, now bulkhead, was not, you know, was, there was no trustee jurisdiction, just twenty-five, thirty years from now.
Right.
You know, there's not gonna be a covenant, so the title report isn't gonna pick it up.
The record's gotta be straight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and keeping the consistency.
Makes life easy for my success.
It's gonna make it the same.
Keeps consistent.
It's gonna be the same.
There's no erosion going on here, so it's a building beach.
Is it the same as here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is what we try to accomplish all around, but.
You have an environment there that seems to be thriving, and you don't want to.
What's the grade behind that?
It's flat. You keep that, sure.
Like, is there, you're gonna have, you're gonna have six inches of whaler exposed on the, on the landward side, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, these are taken dead of winter, I guess.
No, I know, but I just, I just can't see what the grade is going to that, but.
Oh yeah, it's, it's about six inches lower.
About six inches already.
Yeah, yeah.
That's gonna be on the plan, you know, I want.
You want the grade on the plan.
Yeah, and what is, what is the fill behind it?
At least four inches.
No, but are you running grass right up to this, or do you have a?
No, it's, it's all, if you look at those photos, it's all.
I understand it's on the photos, I wanna know what's on the plan.
Yeah, we'll put it on.
You're gonna put.
Yeah, you got it, you got it.
Sounds, sounds, I know, you know, like it's gotta be dialed in. You're gonna have high tide bushes, put high tide bushes, if you're gonna, can't just say native plants.
Okay.
We need a plant spacing, we need everything nailed down, because, you know, in past, we've had troubles with some of these inspections where the, you know, it says, oh, we have native species, and you have one or two sprigs of native species, and then somebody comes in and, and puts fill in, you know, well, we got our native, native, so we need it nailed down.
Looks like it's like twelve inches, probably six inch.
Yeah.
I would agree. So there's two, one exposed on the other side.
Yeah.
That look, right? So it's, it's considered.
Yeah, those are eight by, it looks like those are eight by, so it's, it's pretty close.
It's pretty close, all right, well, we'll make sure it's six inches, and planting, please.
Yeah.
Exact.
And then your, your plans also show that you need more water, pretty far away from the.
Well, that was the, that was, your update, yeah, we're definitely gonna update the plans. And stamp them.
So hold until.
Well, that's what it was on, on the old survey.
Mean high, there's a stain on the.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we just copied it off the survey.
Yeah, this is twenty twenty-one, surveyed in twenty twenty-one and revised in twenty twenty-four.
We'll be giving seventeen, you need more time?
We could probably turn this around.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Just try and get it on our next work session.
We'd like to, if that's possible. We'll provide stamp plans as well.
Right.
So hold until seventeen.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Seventeen, that's all you have, right?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
You got it.
And thanks for making all the signs.
Right, yeah, that'd be helpful. We got five forty-eight?
Definitely sent an email, Steve, you can't leave.
Daphne?
Yes.
All right, so that's on hold.
That's my five forty-eight?
Yes.
I, I received an email from Steve Sinkovich about it. I'm just gonna read this out loud, I don't know if you guys got it. I conducted the site inspection for the Kachansky application today. The walkway would go over a tidal marsh dominated by Spartina and possibly spike grass with patches of common reed and mosquito ditches. There were no other structures in this direct vicinity, although there is an apparent upland dike about a hundred and fifty feet to the east, likely the material dredged to create the ditches. A small marina approximately three hundred and fifty feet to the east, and a long, about five hundred foot long walkway to the west, about six hundred feet away. Our concerns with the length of the proposed walkway remain, especially since it would cross over mostly native vegetation. We'll likely be sending a comment letter on this, but will discuss further internally and let you know. Could be available for a call next week instead.
That's from, okay, so it's on hold, oh, if he has his letter.
Yeah, try and.
Is the, is the walkway gonna be elevated fifty-four inches?
Four feet.
Four feet? Not four and a half feet?
I thought it was four.
And it's gonna have railings on it?
Four feet.
Does this, does this have to apply to Army Corps, yeah, right?
Yeah, they should.
So, I mean, that's gotta be higher than four foot.
It's usually fifty-four inches.
Yeah.
I know, and, I know there were a couple memos from Chuck Hamilton and the D E C in the past, in this area, not wanting these railings on these docks because of birds of prey would perch on them and predate the other, like plovers and other shoreburns in the area. Is that a concern still, or is it something that?
That would be a Steve, that would be the guy that just wrote.
That's the letter. Exactly, so I, I.
Yeah.
I mean, my suggestion is, we put it on hold. Have everybody come in, and then we'll address it when we're actually, you know. There's gonna be a lot of questions with this one, right?
Yeah, but it specifically says four feet, minimum distance of four feet between stringers and the white line vegetation.
That's what the Army Corps probably imperves, it's four feet.
Right.
Even with the block.
Yeah.
I know.
And it's over four feet, they're gonna need railings for safety.
I know.
It's not.
It's gonna be like a bridge.
They have, thankfully, a minimalist railing, according to the plans, I mean, there's no spindles, just one top rail.
Right.
Which, you know, is a good thing, yeah.
Hold. Hold. Let's go to general permit application determination.
Forty-four first, I need Adam James here, audience.
Let's look at the plan.
Wanna come down, Jim, or are you good?
I don't think he's, he doesn't have to, I don't think, but if he wants to, he can.
Well, you hear.
Stamp plans, we have the stamp plans, they match.
I mean, I wanna make sure this thing gets approved, because the client has to go back to the village on the.
All right, well, you got every, you've satisfied everything that we needed, so.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Well, you hear five, any update with that, with your plans, five bedroom?
We're getting there, yeah, one step at a time. I spoke to a lady, lady this morning.
Advance that, James.
We'll, we'll get a result.
All right, thank you. You're talking soon.
Yeah, okay. Make it easy.
You too. We need exec, right, we have an exec going on for discussion of personnel issues. So I would like to make a motion to adjourn the work session, go into executive session for the purposes of discussion concerning personnel and litigation. Segmented by trustee McLaughlin, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a great one, everybody, we'll see you later on this afternoon.